I'd like to call the meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Education to order. We're at Hilton Head Island Middle School and Media Center, 55 Wilborn Road, Hilton Head Island, South Carolina. This is August 5th, 2025. It's 4:30 PM. In accordance with new safety and security guidelines, bags, backpacks, and purses are prohibited by the public at Beaufort County Board of Education meetings. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker on Beaufort County School District and school-related topics. Citizens wishing to participate in public comments can do so in person or via phone. There are two scheduled public comment forums during each board meeting. The first is a 30-minute session near the beginning of the meeting, limited to topics on the board meeting agenda. The second is a 15-minute session which takes place prior to adjournment, but no later than 9:00 PM. Requests to participate in public comments via phone will be accepted electronically. You can find the comment form at our website. Please sign up using the public comment form 24 hours from the day of the meeting. Requesters will receive a phone call during their respective public forum time and should be ready to speak. Citizens desiring to participate in person must fill out a public comment card that can be obtained from the board clerk on arrival. Mr. Vice Chair, could we have a motion to go into executive session?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Could you read what?
Oh.
Wait, okay, gotta read it first. Go ahead. You start right there.
Oh, okay. Oh my God.
Yeah.
Okay, I volunteer for that, huh? All right, call to order executive session, discussion of negotiations, incident to propose Pritchard Street temporary easement located in Southern Beaufort County pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated Section 30-4-40, Prence A, Prence 5. The next one is receipt of legal advice regarding property located in Southern Beaufort County pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated Section 30-4-70, Prence A, Prence 2. The next one is employment matter regarding personnel ratification report, employment, appointment, promotion, and compensation pursuant to SC Code annotation Section 30-4-70, Prence A, Prence 1. The next one is receipt of legal advice relating to instructional materials covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation Section 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice relating to pending claims covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation Section 30-4-70A2. And then lastly, discussion of proposed selection of the therapeutic day program for students with autism. Request for proposal number 25-026 pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation, Section 30-4-70A2.
Okay, have a motion, a second? Okay, Mr. Small has seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to know who would be advising us during the second session.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I didn't, don't hear Mr. Smith. All right, we're going to have a vote then. I'm going to ask the people in the conference room to raise their hand and vote, and then I will call by roll the people online. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Pastor Gordon, how do you vote?
Gordon, say aye.
Say aye, sir.
Aye.
He said aye, all right. Mr. Smith, how do you vote?
I had a question. I had a question. I was wanting to, was be advising us.
I'm not hearing him.
I can do it.
I'm voting aye. Victor Nay is not on. Pastor Gordon, I got you on now. Mr. Small, I've got. Mr. Car, David Pastor, Dr. Carr, Carlton Dallas is here. Ms. Frazier is here. Would you like to vote to go into executive session?
Yes, sir, aye.
All right, Ms. Frazier votes aye. Ms. Hay. Ms. Hay, you're muted.
Yeah, they must be, they must be can't hear us.
Out here. All right, and Ms. Boatright.
Can you guys hear me?
Can't hear us.
No, they can't. They must be.
Can you hear Ms. Boatright? Okay, can we fix, can we fix this before we start? But we, we have enough to go into executive session, so we're moving to executive session. It's in a different room now. It's to the left as we go out. All right, let's go. Sorry about that.
Let's call the meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, do we have any actions necessary or appropriate regarding matters discussed in executive session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Number one, I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to finalize the temporary easement associated with the Pritchard Street easement agreement with the town of Bluffton.
The second by Mr. Small, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor in the boardroom signify by saying aye. Aye. I have, okay, is it aye? All right.
Second motion, I move--
No, wait, no.
We're doing online.
Online. Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Thank you.
Number two.
I'm sorry, did you have, were you a nay?
Yeah, I'm a nay, I think, I'm a nay on that.
One nay, okay, got one nay. Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendations for employment listed on the July 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2025 Personnel Ratification Report.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in the meeting area, please vote, if those have aye. 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 And online, Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Aye. Ms. Hay?
Ms. Hay, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, final motion. I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to issue an award for the therapeutic day program for students with autism to specialized education of Georgia Incorporated as described in RFP number 25-026. The Board authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the contractors upon the expiration of the protest period.
Have a second, five, Ms. Gordon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor in the boardroom signify by saying aye. Aye. Online, Ms. Hay?
Ms. Hay, aye.
All right, Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, want me to go ahead and move the approval agenda?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Carr, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor in the boardroom signify by saying aye. Aye. Online, Pastor Gordon? Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Okay, that's all right. Ms. Hay?
Ms. Hay, aye.
Motion carries. Do you now stand for the pledge of allegiance? And please stand, stay standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a motion of silence for the following individuals. English Brown, sped job coach at Me River High School and Bluffton High School. Coach Joe Monomer, Hilton Head High School Athletic Director. Patricia Pennington, teacher at Hilton Head Island Elementary School. Speakers participating in person shall read and fully complete a public comment card, which they've done. Request to participate has been through the phone or electronically. Issues involving pending litigation are not subject to public comment participation. The use of physically threatening actions, remarks, comments, or conduct by the speaker or members of the audience are prohibited, and any behavior that willfully disrupts a meeting to the extent that the early conduct of the meeting is seriously compromised is prohibited. No presentation by a speaker shall exceed three minutes. The chair will strictly enforce this time limit. A suitable timing device will be employed to notify the speaker of the end of his or her comment period. Speakers shall not yield their time to another speaker. Persons appearing before the Board should be aware that the Board members are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matter. Neither the Board or individual members will respond to speakers during public comment. And with that, we have the first public comment, Ms. Bedley Betsy Hinderleider, subject instructional material review.
Members of the Beaufort County School Board and fellow citizens, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Betsy Hinderleider, and I'm a parent of a Beaufort County public school student, a taxpayer, and I had the privilege of serving on one of the district's book review committees in 2023. My purpose tonight is simple, to urge you in the strongest terms to decline any fresh review of books that have already been through that rigorous transparent process. In 2023, district parents, educators, and community stakeholders joined together to examine contested titles, looking very carefully at content, age appropriateness, and instructional value. That process yielded thoughtful discussions, public hearings, and clear, consistent decisions. To reopen that door would now squander hundreds of volunteer hours, undermine the integrity of our own procedures, and send the message that any single challenger can reset the clock at will. Second, the parent who resubmitted these titles has no child currently enrolled in the school district. Under Regulation 43-170, challenges are predicated on genuine parental concern for your own child's education. When that standing evaporates, so does the legitimacy of the request. So these petitions must be nullified, lest we invite us meritless re-reviews from anyone with a grudge or an agenda. Third, there has been direct interference from the State Board of Education and its chair, who is pressuring you all to override our locally adopted policies and force us into another round of reviews. This threat violates our principle of home rule, which is beloved in South Carolina. It entrusts elected officials with authority over our schools. To repeat, elected, and I'll add, local officials, that is you all. We cannot allow statewide appointees to undo the democratic decisions that made, were made by our local community. Fundly, in good faith towards our students, our teachers, and taxpayers, let's acknowledge that money spent on redundant reviews equals funds taken away from classrooms, from programs, from essential support services. Residents of Beaufort County deserve assurances that their tax dollars are being used wisely, not to rehash decisions that were already made fairly and very thoroughly. In closing, I call on you as elected stewards of public trust to assert your authority, respect the process, and stand firm against these resubmitted challenges and the state board's threats. Thank you.
Next question. Mary Foster, instructional materials review is the topic.
Good evening. I'm an educator, a parent of two former Beaufort County students, the founders of Riverview Charter School. I've had, oh, I'm in stereo. I've had the privilege of watching this school district grow and change in many positive ways in the 21 years I've lived in Beaufort. After two individuals petitioned to remove nearly 100 books from our schools in the fall of 2022, I began attending your meetings regularly. I spoke at some of those meetings, but I also listened to countless parents, educators, community members, and students speak passionately about the need to have books available in our schools that represent diverse life experiences and interests. Our community was overwhelmingly in favor of returning the books, trusting librarians, and allowing students and their families to choose what books they read. In late 2023, as our review process of those challenged titles was coming to an end, the State Board of Education presented a Regulation 43-170 that would allow for books to be removed from every public school in the state if challenged. I attended every school board meeting where this regulation was discussed, and I was there both times the state board members. Much like we saw here in Beaufort County, the folks who showed up for those discussions and votes were overwhelmingly opposed to this regulation. Regardless, it ultimately went into effect last summer. Since then, we've seen 21 books, all from our complainant's original list in Beaufort County, be removed from every school in South Carolina. I attended every State Board of Education meeting where they discussed these books and all of the instructional materials review committee meetings. I have observed the mental gymnastics as they try to determine what exactly their regulation requires them to do. A regulation I might explicitly requires no decision maker to read the book in full. The regulation suggests that all subjects are inappropriate for all ages of student, and the criminal code cited in this regulation specifies that sexual content includes excretion. So the book my preschool students love, What Do They Do With the Pooh at the Zoo, is technically a violation of this regulation. It also implies that a book that is not appropriate for a preschooler to read is not accessible to an 18-year-old high school student either. Which would be laughed so absurd. I urge you to respect that policy and use your experience with it to encourage our State Department of Education to reconsider this regulation and their review process. Remember, every family in this state has the right to operate out of any rules. We must not allow one parent, or even a senior parent, to make changes to every student in this state. Thank you for the work you do and for your commitment to our community and our schools. I'm so grateful for each of you and for the opportunity--
Next item on the agenda is the Citizens Led Oversight Committee report. And Mr. Marko.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am here to talk about two referendums, not just one. First of all, the 2019 referendum. When I look at around the room, I know the makeup of the Board of Education has changed over the years. So I just want to maybe give you a briefing. Some of you have heard this before, and maybe some of you have not. First off, the 2019 referendum, passed by the voters, was 300, and I'm going to speak in broad terms, if it's okay with you. It was $375 million. Now, what we have done, or what the district has done, is that they have spent, of that 375, they have spent 358 million. They have also encumbered, but when I say encumbered, that means they've signed contracts where the cost will not be exceeded in order to get the project completed. That's 16 million. You combine those two, that's 374 million out of the 375. What it, that tells me that we're just about through with this project. We have 1 million left, 1 million plus left. We still have some contingency money left. Now, what does that mean? That means that these projects were built with the funding that was designed for, and not only did, did we promise to the taxpayers what they would receive, they were not asked to pay any additional amounts. And the projects were completed in accordance with what was initially said in the referendum. And also, we got the approval from OSF, the, I hope I said that correctly, the Office of School Facilities. That's important. That means that the things were done the way they should be done. And you know-- And you know what? Everything was within the budget. I think that's marvelous. That's the 2019 referendum, and I'm going to give you a chance to speak about any one of them after I'm through. Now I want to talk about the 2023 referendum. That was higher. It was 439 million. We have spent 53 million. We've encumbered 130 million. Total, 183, or 40, over 41% of what the projects were supposed, what the referendum said. Now, these referendums, they don't get done in one year. They take a number of years, and so it's four to five years in order to get things complete. Again, there was a contingency built in, and the total contingency of that 439 was 28 million. We've only used 3 million of that so far. So we still have, we have a long ways to go in order to complete it, but we have a lot of contingency left. Now, I want to talk a bit about the makeup of the Citizens Led Oversight Committee, or CLOCK, as you say. Eight individuals that are from all parts of the county, we have different backgrounds. We feel like we're seasoned individuals. You can tell from my gray hair and some of the gray hairs of the others. But what our job is, we're referees, or umpires, as you may say. And all we are there for is to say, are things being done correctly? Are things being done, are we running over the budget? And if we are, we're going to let you all know. And so far, everything has been good. Now, and let me put this in a sports analogy. After the game is, after the sports event is over, they don't talk about the umpires, and they don't talk about the referees. They talk about the players. And who are the players? It's the folks that work for the district internally, in terms of planning, in terms of construction, and in terms of finance, meaning, is the money going to be there whenever the contractor says, hey, go ahead and give us, give us the money that you promised us? And that means they're communicating together, and they're doing a good job of it. Secondly, it's the construction management firm from the outside. You hired one, they've done a good job, everything is still within the budget, and so I'm here to tell you that even, we look hard at all of these things, and we haven't found anything at this point. That's my report. I'll open it up to any questions that anybody may have.
Mr. Smith?
First off, I'll start by saying that I don't have a question, but I would just like to thank you for the hard work that you've done personally. I know you've, I'm not sure, I would say this is your first time, and it's not your first time presenting since Mr. Barbara, I mean, what's his name? Yeah, Barbara, yeah. Yes, sir, I wanted to tell you that your presentation and the way how you elegantly said it all tonight, and from watching you and being there and seeing everything that we do, I just want to publicly tell you, I appreciate you and thank you for your continued hard work.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Comments online?
Yes, I'd like to, as a former CLOCK member, I just want to thank the group and the process put together because I learned a lot. And to see how the expertise of the members interacted with the district staff and the external suppliers as well is very rewarding to see how it has continued to grow and become even better, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Carl. I appreciate that.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Just one quick comment. Thank you for your time and dedication. I mean, you've been with us in this initiative from the beginning, and I want to thank you for what you and all the others have done that have been a part of it. And I think I would, you know, imitation is the greatest form of flattery, if you will, right? And I just want you to know that every so often, and more frequently than you might think, I get a call from a superintendent in another school district, and I get a call from sometimes a board member from another school district that is interested in the work that a citizen-led oversight committee does. So, and it's my privilege to tell them about the great work that your team has done in making sure that the school district is following through on what they said they would do with respect to the referendum project. So I appreciate all the work that you've done, and want you to know that there are others looking and interested, and would like to replicate the kind of work that you all do.
Well, thank you, but one thing needs to be said, is you started the process, and I think that's a plus. The second thing is, it's just not me, I just have the privilege of standing in front of you to represent all the other seven folks that are on this group, and the ones that have been in this group. And the thanks really need to go to the folks that you have hired and the folks that you've contracted with. That's important.
I would add another group of folks, and that is our community in Beaufort County, who has supported the first referendum and determined to support the second referendum, and we're grateful for that work that allows us to improve our schools and facilities.
Right, and as you drove here this evening, you probably saw some of the effects of that.
Mr. Warko, how many meetings has the CLOCK had?
We have met every month since we started in February of 2020, and I'm not sure the number.
I think it's 60-some, right?
Yes, and you've been to most of them, and thank you very much.
Been to 60 meetings. Volunteers coming in, spending their time, and that's just for the meetings. They also go out and inspect sites. They also meet in committees and inspect the finances. Many, many thousands of man-hours have been spent by a volunteer community organization, and your organization is to be commended, sir.
I'll pass that on. Thank you very much. Any other questions that I can address, or comments? Hearing none, I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a committee report. I don't see any committee reports this time. I have the chair's report, I don't have a report. Superintendent's report, student achievement, update on school system opening professional development day.
Thank you, sir. Last Wednesday, we held our Welcome Back Professional Development Days for our teachers and administrators and support staff in Beaufort County. And we had everyone together in order to kick off the year, establish some goals with respect to that. And I just want to, as the team is coming forward, I have to tell you, an event like that is impossible without a team like this to pull off. They have worked tirelessly to prepare, and this is the dynamic duo coming up over here behind Dr. Stratos, but certainly Nikia Campbell and Stacy Cleveland are absolutely incredible at how they bring together an event. And let me tell you, they gave our senior staff a high-level briefing that, prior to the event, which we were firing off questions, much like the CLOCK does at our CLOCK meetings to our staff, and everything we thought of in asking questions, they had thought of in their preparations. And it was absolutely incredible. So I just want them to take a moment and tell you about that day.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members, and it's a great honor that I'm going to bring forward Dr. Nikia Campbell and Mrs. Stacy Cleveland. I don't want to step on their presentation because their work can be defined by what you're going to see in front of you shortly, but I do have to share with each one of you board members and as well as those here in the audience this evening. The work put forward by both Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Stacy Cleveland can be competitive with anywhere else nationally, and I'll use the vernacular one of our board members globally. So with that, it's a high honor to bring forward Dr. Campbell and Ms. Cleveland.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so on July 30th, we welcomed back our teachers and support staff at our district professional development and welcome back day at Bluffton High School. And I want us, I asked Ms. Cleveland to join me because a lot of times when I do presentations, I say that it's a team effort, but I wanted everyone to see the team that supports a lot of our district initiative. I can't do it alone, so I wanted to make sure that she is publicly recognized for her work. Our district professional development welcome back day is a district initiative, and it is supported by our district pillars, achievement and support. In addition, it is also aligned to several of our district indicators. So you will see in your presentation, 1.2, teacher and administrator quality, 2.1, build district-wide culture, pride, trust, and respect, and OE 12, ensure teachers participate in collaborative learning communities and other professional development opportunities. So in preparation for our July 30th professional development day, we did something a little different this year. We provided a meet and greet for our new teachers, which was held the day before July 30th. And the purpose of that was to give our new teachers an opportunity to establish positive connections with our school leadership, and review expectations, share resources and support, and give teachers just a little bit more time in the classroom before the big district professional development day, which was held at Bluffton High School. On July 30th, we had more than 2,000 educators in attendance, and there's a picture of what we took of a portion of the gym that day. Staff members wore their school spirit T-shirts, showing school pride. The energy in the building was electrifying, and it helped to set a positive tone for this school year. This is a snapshot of the schedule for the day on July 30th. We had a general session, AM, and a PM session for that particular day. The number of sessions that we offered to our teachers and support staff totaled more than 150 sessions, and those sessions were held at three locations, Bluffton Elementary School, as well as the Early Childhood Center, A.G. McCracken Middle School, and Bluffton This year, the Marine Corps Band performed during our general session. The band was very impressive, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our board member Victor Nay for helping us reserve the band this year. Our pride inspired and motivated us with his clear vision and goals for the school year, 75, 75, 92, reinforcing the importance of working together and telling our stories, but most importantly, the continuous improvement for all of us to ensure the outcomes that we want for all students that we serve in Beaufort County. And finally, our district professional day, we also recognize our Principal of the Year, Bradley Terrence, our Assistant Principal of the Year, Geneva Young, and our five finalists, Teachers of the Year. And lastly, I want to conclude that we had four additional school professional development days, which were held on the 31st, August 1st, the 4th, and the 5th. All principals submitted professional development agendas outlining their events at each of I want to say again that I publicly thank Ms. Cleveland for all of your hard work and all that she does for our initiatives for the district, but really, she makes our district really look good. Henry Ford says it best, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." And I wish Beaufort County a very successful school year.
Questions, comments from the board?
I just would like to say that that pep rally is just through the roof. And I was sitting next to the chair, and I saw he was so enthused, he went up to the gentleman who was head of the band and gave him his card, so I think the chair was impressed as well. The other thing is, I saw a lot of innovation. I went to four different sessions just to observe, and it's amazing the learning and the enthusiasm of the teachers and the professional staff that were participating in terms of asking questions and constantly improving their skill sets. So kudos to that in terms of the culture. And then the last thing is, I was also able to go to the event the day before at Bluffton High School with Principal Hall, and he was doing a professional day for his own arriving staff, and that too is very, very fascinating. So kudos to the team and all the outcomes, so thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Campbell and Ms. Cleveland, I know both of you, and I'm just excited about what Beaufort County is doing every year for professional development, for what you all do every year. It gets better and better. I missed this one because I was not, you know, I was ill, but I tell you, I was sitting at home thinking, I need to be at Bluffton High School, because it is an innovative day for our staff coming back to the walls and halls of our schools, but to recognize the hard work and dedication that this team puts together, you're talking over 2,000 people in attendance. That's a lot. That's a rock concert, you know? That's a rock concert. So thank you, and continue doing what you're doing, and I'm hoping that I'll be there next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say ditto to what everyone else has said, but within especially, I would just also like to add to that about Mrs., Mrs., oh my God, Ms. Cleveland. You know, they tell the story about the little lady with the big stick. Ms. Cleveland, let me tell you publicly, you got a huge stick. Behind the scenes and everything that the district have, you're always seeing you this quiet person, but always moving and getting it done, and not asking no questions, asking up to everyone, how can I help you, if there's anything I can do for you, looking and checking, see if there's anything that came, anyone, hey, listen, you are, listen, you are the epitome of what a phenomenal worker and a phenomenal woman would really do to make sure that everything is okay. I don't care if anybody brings you a complaint, whether it's good or bad, your face doesn't change, you smile, and you say thank you. That goes a long way in America. Everyone will have good customer service, or everyone can't control their emotions. So let me say to you publicly, thank you, and I appreciate you for all the years that you've been behind the scenes and not once saying, what about me? I appreciate you for that. Thank you for that, man.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Spot on, Mr. Smith, and if there's anything I know about Ms. Cleveland is that she's hating being a spotlight right now. So since we've done that, let's just might as well go all the way, because I think she deserves a round of applause from us specifically.
Both very much.
Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Excuse me, good evening. I just want to say just a couple of things. During the PD Day, I was approached and given a coin by our proud superintendent, and a hug, and I appreciate that. And on the coin, I didn't really pay attention to the coin, and I read the coin, and it says, "This is our moonshot moment." And that meant a whole lot to me, and I just want you to know, Dr. Campbell, each and every day is a moonshot moment for me, working with you, and I appreciate you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on Superintendent's report is fiscal responsibility, and this is an update on federal grant dollars. You know, many of our federal grant dollars were, I'll say, in question because it hadn't been released by the federal government. Go ahead and work your way up front. And Denise Mattson, who is in our finance team and manages- And Denise Mattson, who is in our finance team and manages all of our, our federal dollars, probably has a very brief statement to give you, given the status of where we are today in relation to where we were when we put it on the agenda. So, Ms. Mattson?
That is exactly what I was going to say. Good evening, I'm glad to see you tonight. I was a little worried when we put it on the agenda. Being in federal programs and working with those programs since December has felt like we've been on roller coasters, trying to determine what if, what if, not knowing really what was happening. But I can share with you today that we have been told and released that we will have our ESA grants released to us, as well as our MSAP fifth year that we were waiting on. And so that is all, it was all good news. I had a little bit of good news and bad news last time, but now it's all good news for, until October, can I say that? Then we start again with this, because that's when the federal budget is supposed to be approved. And if it doesn't get approved, then we are kind of in the waiting thing. So October is usually what we look at, and then a continuing resolution usually comes in March. Yeah, it's kind of the last 10 or 15 years on that. So we are anticipating good things for '26 and are hopeful for '27.
Ms. Boe, right?
Hi, thank you. It's good to see you again up here. Can you clarify, because I know the MSAP grant, the MedTech's in its fifth year, what about the one that's in its first year?
We'd already received the funds for that, and so we'll know next April.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions? It's not, thank you very much. Next item, Board Business Action. Motion to Name a District Athletic Facility, Ms. Boe, right?
Thank you. I'm actually, it's, it's good that we're having this conversation here, because as I'm sure you all read the newspaper, Hilton Head Island lost a, a very important member of our community, rather unexpectedly. He was a significant influence in the high school. His name is Joe Momineer. He was the athletic director for 14 years. His children went to school here, are known well in this community, and his wife is a big part of this community, and so it was, it was a very tragic event. But to honor his contributions, I would like to make a request of the board, so I have a motion here. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education, in recognition of the substantial contributions of the late Joe Momineer, initiate the process outlined in Policy GC-3, Section 8, for naming a district athletic facility in his honor. This includes providing public notice and contacting local community leaders in advance of a public hearing to be held prior to final board action on the proposed naming.
Alex, any discussion?
Just to, can you hear? Just to get a clear understanding and moving forward, and moving in this process, what would be the, what would be the process? Because I thought, thought maybe we would want to send this to the operation, I think we've had an operations committee in the process, I mean, prior, prior, or have some, I want to bring that, and we would see how, how, what, what the, the process is and, and what all the, this would encompass. Because I think there's some other, there's some questions out, out there right now, in terms of, once we start naming schools, after people know disrespect to anyone, you know, just, people may say, well, we could have this other guy here, of the different parts of schools, or, you know. So I remember going through this, when we've named some other prior things in this district, so that's why I just want to get some clarification around, what, what's the range of this, and what does, what does it look like?
I understood the motion that was made to basically ask that, that process begin the course of, of moving through those steps. For instance, there, there's a unanimous vote and letter, I believe, from the, come on up, Robert, from the SIC at the school, and, and then there, so there's a series of steps, which does go through the operations committee, and then ultimately landing here in front of the full board. But, but I understood the motion to, to be the beginning of a process, I think, not, not a finalization of a process. Robert, go ahead and, and...
And I may have missed this, did you mention, Ms. Boe, right, that this is the lacrosse field?
Yeah, I was going to clarify this, it's not naming a school, which is a very different process. This is naming an ancillary facility. I believe we just had one recently where we named a library after somebody. It's a community review process that the Board has ultimate say over, so I'm just asking that we initiate the community process.
And I believe the Hilton Head High School SIC is already aware, and that's kind of where it starts, where, so we'll get underway with that and follow through with it.
Thank you. We still have to vote on it.
Right, but normally, I, in my, in my, what I'm saying, I think is normally it would start at the SIC, and then they, eventually, they bring it to the board. And now, we're, it seems like, like we're initiating it versus letting them initiate and then bring it to us, and we go ahead and we accept their recommendation. So I think those are little two different things versus normally, the past, past practices has been that the board has not even, has not initially initiated things. They, they, the SIC has initiated it and brought, and took it to operations and then bring it to the board for a final vote, or if finally accept or reject. And most times, we do, we do accept them. But, so I just, that's just kind of my, you know, I, you know, changes, this is different, this is different. And so being, then, but then it being different, I just want to get some clarity on it, you know, moving forward and how we're going to do things, do, do, do things like this, of this type and of the sort. So I just, you know, so that, so that we're not, in the years to come, it's not being different, you know? It's consistent.
To be clear, my understanding of, of, I, I hear, I understand what you're saying. But to be clear, my understanding of what that, the only thing that motion is going to do is to basically ask us to make sure that if that process is underway, that we usher that process through, making sure that all the checkmarks are done, all the steps are taken. As I said, I think it goes to the operations committee, and then ultimately here to this full board for a final decision. That's my interpretation of what I, I understand the motion to be, that's all. I would just add.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll vote, send the... Saying aye?
Aye.
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 Pastor.
Aye.
Aye.
Pastor.
Aye.
Pastor.
Aye.
Pastor.
Aye.
Pastor.
I'm going to stay, yeah, I'm going to stay.
Thank you.
Future agenda topics, does any board member have a future?
Oh, yes. The process in terms of, the, the, the process in terms of, of, of hiring for the board, of, 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 the process, the process executive, of, of the process of hiring. We can start, yeah, we can start, start there, yeah. In terms of the, our assistant or anything else, and with that, yeah, yeah.
in being involved in different groups, I think we need to look at how all of that works.
So that from, okay?
Yes.
Okay. He would be. Dr. Rodriguez?
That is fine.
Okay. Yep. Right, any other?
Also, the, is there a timeline on the, when we start working the Rubik for the Superintendent's evaluation for his next, I, I think we've been kind of...
We've been just talking about that, and we'll have something out. Dr. Carr's going to look at his schedule, and we'll get a meeting time set up to talk about the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and my choices. And my choices as well.
Like, right choices as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got it. All right, it's time for an announcement. Rodriguez?
Probably the most important announcement, tomorrow is the first day of school for this upcoming year, and we're very excited to welcome our students back through our doors. I sent a message to our families and our parents today, but it's a very exciting time for all of us, and I want to thank all of our employees in the Beaufort County School District for their hard work and dedication to prepare for tomorrow. And just know that we are excited to welcome our students and families to our schools tomorrow.
That a week or a month from now, on September 6th, there will be a marching band exhibition for all high schools, held at May River Athletic Field at 10:00 AM. I appreciate that opportunity to, and I'll update you next week. It turns out to be the Saturday after our next board meeting. Now to the subject of additional positions. I see posting of two more positions relative to the fine arts. Starting, going back three years ago, you, the board, approved the first position. Prior to that, that position was shared with the social studies coordinator, and so you made a separate coordinator for fine arts. Volunteer around the state. I can assure you that the image of fine arts here needs to be improved, and finding meaningful people has been difficult. The addition of these two positions, in a vernacular that says, you put your money where your mouth is, and I appreciate that. And in so doing, I'm trying to see the time, in so doing, I have contacts both with retired band directors in the state, also a band director, which you would arguably say is one of the top two bands in the country, who has contacts throughout the country. I've alerted, I've put a little note to both of them and said, things are changing here. They're putting the dollars where their mouth is, and I appreciate it. Not that you two folks would be the candidates, but lent the word out nationally and within the state, and I'm trying to promote that, and I appreciate that. 13 seconds, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Give them a statue.
That completes our agenda items, so unless there's objection, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you very much.